Good evening and welcome to the February 24, 2025, regular meeting of the Tridifferent Easttown School Board. We'll begin as always with a salute to the flag. Regular school board meetings are business meetings that are open to the public during which we provide several opportunities for public comment on items before the board. The first comment period is reserved for announced additional agenda items and items on the consent agenda only. Additional public comment will be heard for the actions listed under other actions under consideration. The final comment period near the end of the meeting is reserved for all other matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before the T E S D Board of Directors and which are not covered by other comment periods. Each public comment period is reserved for residents and taxpayers. Additionally, the board will accept comments from sitting public officials for non-campaigning purposes and by agreement with the T E A and Teneg, the board will accept comments from the union presidents. All comments should be directed to the board as a whole or to the presiding officer. No comments or questions should be directed to individual board members. All public comments and responses should be in the spirit of civil public discourse. Also, please be aware that intentionally disrupting a lawful meeting or the administration of a government function is a criminal offense in Pennsylvania. The school board values the opportunity to hear from the community in person and appreciate your cooperation in advance. So with that introduction, we will move on to our next item on the agenda, which are reports from student representatives. We'll hear from our student representatives, Ian Kumar and Maggie Neary.
Hello, everyone. Oh, sorry about that. Good afternoon. It's good to see everyone again at another school board meeting. I'm really excited to be here and to talk about a little bit about what's going on at Conestoga from the student perspective, as well as some of the activities that are going on in this past month of February and what we're looking forward to. First, just to talk about student news as a reflection of what's happened in February, course selection for the 2025 to 2026 school year is finalized. So now all freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, and even eighth graders at the TE Middle School or Valley Forge Middle School are set for what courses they'll be taking. And now they just have to get excited, maybe they have to check if they have some summer work to do and just get excited for this next year. Now, I want to talk about some of the activities that have been are happening right now. First, the musical, which is Chicago, and I was told to emphasize that it's a teen edition, so please don't worry about that. It's happening from Wednesday to Saturday at 7:00 PM, and on Saturday, there's two shows at 2:00 PM and 7:00 PM, and tickets are at stogatheater.com. These tickets generally always sell out, so I recommend that if you're interested to check it out as fast as possible. I would also like to talk about Minithon, which I've mentioned in some past meetings before, which is essentially an activity at Conestoga where we fundraise money for pediatric cancer research via Four Diamonds, an organization. And currently, we're continuing this effort, and tomorrow with the Take Care Tuesday event, we are spreading information and making sure that people around are informed of what is Minithon and why we do it and why we encourage people to donate. Additionally, to everyone that's listening to this meeting right now, whether it's an individual donation or maybe a donation from the company you work at, we really encourage and are always looking for support. Next, I'd like to talk about the Rose Sale, which is an event that Student Council had in February, where essentially students are able to buy a note or a rose or candy and deliver it to anyone in the building, whether it be another student, teacher, or any staff. And this is a really great opportunity to, you know, really feel the spirit of Valentine's Day and have community come together. It's definitely a great event, and we sold around 100 roses and candies. And this is not only bringing profit to Student Council, but is also definitely fun and spirited event. And then lastly, I'd like to talk about DECA, which is essentially a business competition that a massive amount of students participated, 250 kids, this is a record high, participants of people that have qualified from the district to state round, and then 57 people qualified for the international conference, which was this past Wednesday to Friday. So congratulations to the students who qualified and to the students who were fortunate enough to compete at the sports, at the state's competition. Thank you, and I'll hand it off to Maggie to talk about sports.
Thank you, Ian. That was a great update. As you said, I am back with your sports update. Wrestling recently competed in districts, and seven wrestlers, including one girl, are headed to regionals. Swimming also recently had districts, and some Soga swimmers qualify for states, which takes place this March at Bucknell. Both basketball teams are also in districts and have qualified for the state tournament also in March. The boys have district semifinals at Coatsville tomorrow, and the girls have district playbacks at Downey Town East on Wednesday. And this weekend, six remaining winter track athletes will travel to Penn State to compete in the state championships. Good luck to all those Soga athletes still competing this winter season. And as this winter season winds down, spring sports season picks up, with the first week of spring sports officially starting next week, March 3rd. That is all from me. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ian and Maggie. Before we begin the highlights, which is the best part of every school board meeting, I'd like to draw attention to the student artwork, which was supplied by Valley Forge Middle School for this evening's meeting. Sixth grade students created sunset paintings after studying the landscape of the Serengeti during their African art unit. They focused on creating silhouettes of animals and acacia trees against the warm color schemes in the sky. Fifth graders created a hieroglyphic cartouche and portraits in profile view after studying Egyptian art. They learned about the process of printmaking and drawing facial features in proportion, as well as adding colorful embellishments to make their work pop out. Now, please join board members Dr. Yolanda Allen and myself, and Valley Forge Middle School Principal Matt Gibson in greeting students and staff during the highlight session of tonight's board meeting. Special education supervisor Lisa Snyder will be our reader for the evening.
Welcome, everyone. I'm so excited to be here this evening as we recognize our amazing students from Valley Forge Middle School. Students, when I call your name, please walk up this way. You see Mr. Cataldi, and then walk around where you'll greet our board members and Principal Gibson, and then finally to Dr. Torres to receive your certificate. Each month, the Board of School Directors invites TE students and staff members who have demonstrated outstanding achievement to attend the regular school board meeting to be recognized for their efforts. The board invites parents and teachers to accompany their students this evening as the board recognizes them. Those unable to be here tonight will receive their certificates at their schools. Valley Forge Middle School students support Community Service Club. Valley Forge Middle Schools' Community Service Club, known as the Builders Club, has been very active this year. Luka Trupkovich, Al Van Porvahabi, and Catherine Armstrong have been instrumental in helping the club flourish and contribute in various ways. The Builders Club is sponsored by Allison Inch. Thank you all for your service. Valley Forge Middle School student supports school basketball team. Wyatt Campus is the Valley Forge Middle School basketball team manager and has done an excellent job helping the coaches and players during practice and supporting the team during games. Valley Forge is grateful for Wyatt's contributions to the school. Awesome work, Wyatt. Valley Forge Middle School Best Buddies Program enhances school community. This year, Best Buddies is a new club at Valley Forge Middle School that aims to provide students with intellectual and developmental disabilities with increased opportunities to make friends and engage in social interactions. Thirty-nine students from grades five to eight participate in the club that meets at least monthly. Eighth graders Jackson Patia, Emma Patterson, Caroline Bosler, Riley Estivez, Wyatt Campus, Genesis Harps, and Hatif Sahi have taken the lead on organizing monthly activities that include events like craft making. Hi, Jen, this way. Craft making, sports challenges, and community service projects. Katie Bransky is the faculty advisor to Best Buddies Club. Great job, Best Buddies. Valley Forge Middle School Student Council supports school community. The Valley Forge Middle School Student Council has been busy this school year. From spirit weeks to fundraisers, Student Council members have been working hard to promote school spirit and community. The eighth grade officers include Awan Abulaman, President, Jackson Patia, Vice President, Kimberly Wong, Secretary, Ray Wu, Treasurer, Jaden Ulasam, Communications, and Victor Wong, Outreach. Student Council faculty advisors are Manse Kapadia and Brianna Dayton. Thank you, Student Council. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, great job, everyone. So now this is the part of the meeting where we take a brief pause to let folks who are less interested in the business part of our meeting to leave and go do more productive things like homework or studying for the next test or pretty much anything else. So feel free, we'll take a little break here and we'll be back. But you all are, and I'm being a little facetious, encouraged to stay if you want to see the rest of the meeting. Thank you. Easttown School Board. We'll begin as always with a salute to the flag. Regular school board meetings are business meetings that are open to the public during which we provide several opportunities for public comment on items before the board. The first comment period is reserved for announced additional agenda items and items on the consent agenda only. Additional public comment will be heard for the actions listed under other actions under consideration. The final comment period near the end of the meeting is reserved for all other matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before the T E S D Board of Directors and which are not covered by other comment periods. Each public comment period is reserved for residents and taxpayers. Additionally, the board will accept comments from sitting public officials for non-campaigning purposes and by agreement with the T E A and Teneg, the board will accept comments from the union presidents. All comments should be directed to the board as a whole or to the presiding officer. No comments or questions should be directed to individual board members. All public comments and responses should be in the spirit of civil public discourse. Also, please be aware that intentionally disrupting a lawful meeting or the administration of a government function is a criminal offense in Pennsylvania. The school board values the opportunity to hear from the community in person and appreciate your cooperation in advance. So with that introduction, we will move on to our next item on the agenda, which are reports from student representatives. We'll hear from our student representatives, Ian Kumar and Maggie Neary.
Hello, everyone. Oh, sorry about that. Good afternoon. It's good to see everyone again at another school board meeting. I'm really excited to be here and to talk about a little bit about what's going on at Conestoga from the student perspective, as well as some of the activities that are going on in this past month of February and what we're looking forward to. First, just to talk about student news as a reflection of what's happened in February, course selection for the 2025 to 2026 school year is finalized. So now all freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, and even eighth graders at the TE Middle School or Valley Forge Middle School are set for what courses they'll be taking. And now they just have to get excited, maybe they have to check if they have some summer work to do and just get excited for this next year. Now, I want to talk about some of the activities that have been are happening right now. First, the musical, which is Chicago, and I was told to emphasize that it's a teen edition, so please don't worry about that. It's happening from Wednesday to Saturday at 7:00 PM, and on Saturday, there's two shows at 2:00 PM and 7:00 PM, and tickets are at stogatheater.com. These tickets generally always sell out, so I recommend that if you're interested, to check it out as fast as possible. I would also like to talk about Minithon, which I've mentioned in some past meetings before, which is essentially an activity at Conestoga where we fundraise money for pediatric cancer research via Four Diamonds, an organization. And currently, we're continuing this effort, and tomorrow with the Take Care Tuesday event, we are spreading information and making sure that people around are informed of what is Minithon and why we do it and why we encourage people to donate. Additionally, to everyone that's listening to this meeting right now, whether it's an individual donation or maybe a donation from the company you work at, we really encourage and are always looking for support. Next, I'd like to talk about the Rose Sale, which is an event that Student Council had in February, where essentially students are able to buy a note or a rose or a candy and deliver it to anyone in the building, whether it be another student, teacher, or any staff. And this is a really great opportunity to, you know, really feel the spirit of Valentine's Day and have community come together. It's definitely a great event, and we sold around 100 roses and candies. And this is not only bringing profit to Student Council, but is also definitely fun and spirited event. And then lastly, I'd like to talk about DECA, which is essentially a business competition that a massive amount of students participated, 250 kids, this is a record high, participants of people that have qualified from the district to state round, and then 57 people qualified for the international conference, which was this past Wednesday to Friday. So congratulations to the students who qualified and to the students who were fortunate enough to compete at the sports, at the state's competition. Thank you, and I'll hand it off to Maggie to talk about sports.
Thank you, Ian. That was a great update. As you said, I am back with your sports update. Wrestling recently competed in districts, and seven wrestlers, including one girl, are headed to regionals. Swimming also recently had districts, and some Soga swimmers qualified for states, which takes place this March at Bucknell. Both basketball teams are also in districts and have qualified for the state tournament also in March. The boys have district semifinals at Coatsville tomorrow, and the girls have district playbacks at Downey Town East on Wednesday. And this weekend, six remaining winter track athletes will travel to Penn State to compete in the state championships. Good luck to all those Soga athletes still competing this winter season. And as this winter season winds down, spring sports season picks up, with the first week of spring sports officially starting next week, March 3rd. That is all from me. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ian and Maggie. Before we begin the highlights, which is the best part of every school board meeting, I'd like to draw attention to the student artwork, which was supplied by Valley Forge Middle School for this evening's meeting. Sixth grade students created sunset paintings after studying the landscape of the Serengeti during their African art unit. They focused on creating silhouettes of animals and acacia trees against the warm color schemes in the sky. Fifth graders created a hieroglyphic cartouche and portraits in profile view after studying Egyptian art. They learned about the process of printmaking and drawing facial features in proportion, as well as adding colorful embellishments to make their work pop out. Now, please join board members Dr. Yolanda Allen and myself, and Valley Forge Middle School Principal Matt Gibson in greeting students and staff during the highlight session of tonight's board meeting. Special education supervisor Lisa Snyder will be our reader for the evening.
Welcome, everyone. I'm so excited to be here this evening as we recognize our amazing students from Valley Forge Middle School. Students, when I call your name, please walk up this way. You see Mr. Cataldi, and then walk around where you'll greet our board members and Principal Gibson, and then finally to Dr. Torres to receive your certificate. Each month, the Board of School Directors invites TE students and staff members who have demonstrated outstanding achievement to attend the regular school board meeting to be recognized for their efforts. The board invites parents and teachers to accompany their students this evening as the board recognizes them. Those unable to be here tonight will receive their certificates at their schools. Valley Forge Middle School students support Community Service Club. Valley Forge Middle Schools' Community Service Club, known as the Builders Club, has been very active this year. Luka Trupkovich, Al Van Porvahabi, and Catherine Armstrong have been instrumental in helping the club flourish and contribute in various ways. The Builders Club is sponsored by Allison Inch. Thank you all for your service.
Thank you, Ms. Audrain. Our next report will be on the Diversity Committee and Dr. Roberto Hattenski.
Thank you. So we met on Monday, February 10th, at the T E A O, and as usual, we reviewed the monthly financial reports. Overall revenues are higher this year than last year by $8 million, the difference coming primarily from real estate tax, real estate transfer tax, and investment income, which are all higher this year than last. investment income, which are all higher this year than last. Also, state and local revenue categories are higher than last year. Total revenue as of January is a little over $157 million. Instruction expenses are higher this year at 92% of budget. The increase in this expense category is due to regular and special education programs. However, we are still within budget at this current time. This year, the overall expenses and encumbrances compared to budget are almost the same similarly similar to last year percentage-wise, and 47.12% of the budget has been expended. The total general fund expenses and encumbrances as of the end of January are $154,615,1479. Then we turned to budget development for this year. Mr. McDonald reviewed the slides and reported that as changes are made to to the budget projections, they will be changing throughout the spring. As a reminder, we don't pass a final budget until June, so we have work to do in between now and then. Changes we're anticipating may come from healthcare expenses budgeted after we receive our second look projection from our consultants, and also future debt service decisions will be based on our projected capital expenditure schedule. And we applied for an act, one exception for special education. It's been submitted to the Pennsylvania Department of Education, and we're waiting approval on that. Next, we had a capital projects funding projection discussion. So Mr. McDonald reviewed the district's plans for funding our upcoming infrastructure projects, including the Athletic Fields Project and new elementary school, as well as the work we continually do throughout the district for maintenance and improvements. He reviewed a possible funding scenario, which is similar to what we presented in the fall, with contributions from the general fund combined with borrowing through bond issues, which is consistent with the district's past practice in the way that we've we funded our capital projects over the years. We will continue to discuss the funding plan as part of but develop as part of budget development throughout the spring as we as we plan for for funding those those investments. We also discussed the key dates for the 2526 budget through the end of June 2025, and we will be reviewing those in two budget workshops, which will be happening next month and in April. So the future meetings of the Finance Committee are right before those. There will be abbreviated meetings, Monday, March 10th, here at Conestoga High School. So we'll have a finance meeting followed by a budget workshop, and then Monday, April 7th, and a short finance meeting followed by a budget workshop. These are great opportunities to get some background, and we have a lot of context provided about past and and future expenditures and what drives the district. So I'd encourage anyone who's interested to attend and participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hattensky. And now we'll go back to Dr. Robert Singh for a report on the Facilities Committee.
Thank you. The Facilities Committee met on February 11th. This was a short meeting due to inclement weather that evening, so committee business focused on the approval of a change order regarding regulated soil removal at the Athletic Field Project. This change order resulted in an increase due to regulated soil needing to be placed above the water table, and this meant it had to go to a different facility. Overall, though, the project remained about two and a quarter percent above its contract its budgeted amount. A second change order was also approved that evening for the new elementary school vestibule deduction for glazing and a wood door removal. This actually resulted in a net zero change order. Finally, there was a short discussion on capital sources and uses, including closing out previous projects such as this beautiful Conestoga expansion and network upgrades. The meeting was adjourned, and our next meeting is scheduled for March 11th, 7:00 PM at the TEAO. All are welcome to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Singh. Now we'll get a report on the Education Committee from Ms. Sue Titi.
Thank you. The Education Committee meeting on February 13th began with a presentation by Dr. Patrick Gaetle, Supervisor of Language Arts. He updated the committee on the elementary reading support program and included a review of the structure of the program, as well as developing changes to the responsibilities of our current elementary reading specialists. He noted that best practices for improving reading achievement begins with a rigorous educational program and extra instructional time for targeted interventions. Given the growing responsibilities of the reading specialists, providing extra instruction outside the 90-minute language arts block to students who require extra support is limited. As a result, the administration has proposed the addition of two reading specialists in the budget for 2526. This would mean that four of the elementary schools would have one and a half reading specialists, and Valley Forge, the largest elementary, would have two reading specialists during the coming year. The committee supported maintaining these positions in the budget at this time. Along with a rigorous educational program and extra instructional time, social and emotional supports to help build student achievement are important. Dr. Grapi, the Director of Safety and Student Services, presented the committee with statistics summarizing mental health specials, mental health services provided to our students. He noted that currently there are six mental health specialists who are providing a growing number of clinical interviews and other positions. They also provide counseling services, they facilitate hospitalization placements, and oversee student attendance improvement plans. They are charged with ensuring that the district is in compliance with the McKinney-Vento law, which mandates support to students who are defined as homeless. Dr. Grapi reported that currently there is one mental health specialist serving all five elementary schools. The district has applied for a grant to fund an additional elementary mental health specialist for one year. That grant was approved for the 2526 year, and Dr. Grapi assured the committee that if a second year extension becomes available, the district will apply for that extension. Finally, Dr. Oscar Torres, Director of Equity and Public Programs, presented the district's comprehensive plan. This plan is required by the Pennsylvania Department of Education once every three years. The goal is to provide continuous improvement in the district in order to facilitate student success. The committee reviewed the plan and noted that it will be available to the public on the district website for more than a month. Approval of the complete plan by the full board is required at its meeting at the end of March. This concludes my report, and our next meeting will be March 13th at TEAO, and we welcome all interested community members. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Titi. Next, we will turn to Ms. Maryam Pichioni for an update on the Ad Hoc Legislative Committee.
For your information, the Federal House Ways and Means Committee released a reconciliation bill list of options that included eliminating tax-exempt status on state and local bonds. An advisory publication noted that this would be detrimental to communities throughout the nation, as tax-exempt bonds provide a crucial tool that enable state and local governments to fund essential infrastructure projects efficiently and affordably. Please contact Senator John Fetterman, Senator Dave McCormick, and Congresswoman Chrissy Houlihan for comments and questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pichioni. Next, we will have an update on the Ad Hoc Public Information Committee from its Chair, Dr. Yolanda Allen.
Thank you. The Ad Hoc Public Information Committee has not met since our last meeting. However, we do have a meeting coming up next month. The meeting will be held at 7:00 PM on March the 18th, 2025, at the TEAO building. And at this meeting, again, we will be discussing the naming of our new, the process of naming for our new elementary school. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Allen. And finally, we'll go back to Ms. Maryam Pichioni for an update on the Intermediate Unit Technical School.
The Chester County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors held its monthly meeting on Wednesday, February 19th. Included was a review in the first reading of the draft 2025-26 Categorical Core and Occupational Education budgets. Key points in the presentation were as follows. No increase in proposed core budget contributions by districts. Proposed 4% increase in occupational education tuition rate. The goal for our marketplace program prices for Chester County school districts is to limit to the Act One Index 4%, and categorical budgets do not require local funds. A second item, I attended a panel discussion presented by Children First discussing an advocacy report titled "A Decade of Stalled Progress." Dr. George Friari of the CCIU was one of the panelists. State Representative Dan Williams was the moderator. And finally, the next CCIU Board of Directors meeting will be held on Wednesday, March the 19th at 7:30 at the Technical College High School Pickering Campus in Phoenixville. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Pichioni, and thank you to all the committee chairs for your reports and your work in shepherding our committees where a lot of the work of this board gets done. So thank you all for that. Next item on the agenda are other actions under consideration, policies recommended for first reading. The action under consideration is that the Board of School Directors approves the following policies on a first reading basis as ready for adoption at the next regular meeting. Policy 1125, Complementary Admission to Events. Policy 8080, Acceptable Use of Technology. And those are them. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Audrain, could you please provide some additional context for the board?
Yes. As time passes, sometimes our policies need to be updated to be consistent with current practice. So Policy and Regulation 1125, Complementary Admission to Events is one such situation. So the administration met with the staff that were responsible for the admission processes for the different school theater productions, and they refined the policy so that it's clear how an individual who may qualify for attending an event is able to obtain free admission. So that really is a lot of work to update that policy. And Policy and Regulation 8080, the Acceptable Use of Technology, was revised to be updated to include the use of drones in our school district. So that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Audrain. Do we have any comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, the board now invites members of the audience to comment on this item. If you have comments or questions, please step to the microphone and identify yourself. Seeing none, we'll go back to the board. Are there any further comments from the board? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Eyes have it, nine zero. We are now at the point of the agenda for public participation from district residents and district taxpayers regarding non-agenda matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before the board. Residents and taxpayers may address the board now on matters not included in the agenda. As a reminder, comments are limited to three minutes. Please, when you come up, state your name and township of residence and state your entire comment, and then the board will determine if there's an appropriate response. So, any comments?
Evening. Hello. Testing. Yeah, there we go. Okay. Evening. My name is Gina Arlen. I'm a 30-year resident of Tridefern Township, proud mother of a 2020 Conestoga High School graduate. I also happen to be a volunteer with the 501(c)(3) nonprofit, Defense of Democracy, just on the aside. First, I'd like to thank the Tridefern East Town Board, teachers, and staff members for creating a climate of inclusivity. In our family's case, as it pertains to my special-needs son, who, by the way, recently graduated from Westchester University with a vocal performance major. One of the great strengths of our community is that we're made up of people from all abilities, religions, cultures, gender identities, sexual orientations, and all walks of life. I encourage you to keep up the good work, which is needed now more than ever. To that end, I'm addressing you today because I'm concerned by the recent reversal of the federal ICE immigration policy that now allows ICE officers to arrest students at sensitive locations such as schools. It's a direct violation of Article 26 of the United Nations Declaration of Human Rights and could have a devastating effect for immigrant families and their children, or any child at school who finds themselves suddenly exposed to raids and arrests of their friends. Schools should be a safe place for students, teachers, and families and visitors, so I'm just asking if faculty and staff have been trained in how to handle ICE presence at our schools. Please help reassure that me that students will feel safe attending school in our community, and thank you.
Thank you for your comment and for your your question. We are also keeping up with these sorts of things, but I will turn to you, Dr. Gusek, to talk about some of the actions that may or may not be occurring on the ground.
Thank you. So up to this point, we've had no contact from any of the members of the ICE organization. The information has been shared with our schools that should someone arrive, they would, the process basically is they would contact us in the central office. We would attend, we would review credentials. Mr. Ruse, our solicitor, would be called. There are certain conditions that would be required, such as a judicial warrant, that would be necessary for any further school cooperation, but our principals have all been informed of that practice.
Thank you, Dr. Gusek. Do we have any more questions or comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, the public comment periods for this evening are now closed. This is the point in our meeting when we may make, when we make any announcements required by the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act. Our solicitor this evening is Ken Ruse, and he will make any required announcements.
Yes, the board met in executive session prior to this meeting tonight, immediately prior, regarding potential identifiable litigation complaints.
Thank you, Mr. Ruse. Future meetings, Monday, March 10th, 2025, Budget Workshop 1, 7:30 PM at Conestoga High School. Then next meeting, Monday, March 24th, 2025, regular board meeting, 7:30 PM, once again here at Conestoga High School. Next meeting after that, Monday, April 7th, 2025, Budget Workshop 2, the sequel, 7:30 PM, here again at Conestoga High School. And after that, Monday, April 28th, 2025, regular board meeting, 7:30 PM, once again here at Conestoga High School. I will now, this is the point in the meeting, when I turn to other board members to see if there are any other general announcements. Seeing none, I'll just make again another plug for the musical. If you don't have your tickets yet, go get them. It is always an excellent performance every year, always amazed by the talent of our students and the dedication of our staff to put on these sorts of productions. If you have not been, I cannot recommend it strongly enough how great these how great these performances are. So with that, correspondence that the board has received is on page 128 of your agenda, and then I will call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, you're welcome to stay. Eyes have it, nine zero. Thank you very much.